Good morning, everybody. I'm online. You're looking good.
We can hear you.
All right, it's 8:30. I'll call the meeting to order and we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first thing on the agenda is the ordinance for purchase of blanket and individual bonds.
I've been working with the county attorney. We are cleaning up some language. The last ordinance was from 2015, cleaning up some amounts and the county purchases blanket bond for the all employees that handle cash and then also individual bonds as required by state for the treasurer and the clerk. So we've cleaned up some language, adjusted a few amounts, and there was a couple of people on there like the county attorney that didn't need to be on our bond. So we've cleaned all that up and I sent it all to you for your review and if you wish to pass it, there's that.
All right, was there any questions with it?
I'll make a motion that we accept the ordinance to purchase the bonds.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the ordinance for the bonds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I believe you have to take a roll call vote.
Sorry, my fault.
All right, a roll call vote. Karen Eagleson?
Yes.
Jim Young?
Yes.
Brian Riegeh, Brian Riegehsecker?
Yes.
And Mike Strasser?
Yes.
Harold Gingrich?
Yes.
Motion to waive second.
I was gonna say, is there a motion to waive second reading?
So move.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to waive second reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And you, oh, sorry.
Karen?
Aye.
Yes. Jim Young?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
All right, there was also a resolution to transfer funds to the Rainy Day Fund.
In prior years, we have passed this resolution that allows, or the county, by statute, the county is allowed to transfer unused, unappropriated funds from county general over to Rainy Day with the intent of making the, so then they're moved over there and held in Rainy Day as opposed to in county general. In prior years, you've passed the ordinance at the council meeting. Once we get done paying bills, December 30th, I'll get in contact with Jim and we can work out a figure that falls within those parameters and we feel comfortable with. If you're, if you, this is strictly optional, you don't have to do it, but we've been trying to move money over to Rainy Day to keep it for a rainy day.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the transfer resolution from unencumbered funds to Rainy Day Fund. Any discussion? Okay, Kathy, would you do the vote?
Mike?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
And that does not require a waiting second since it's a transfer.
Yes.
This is the next one. Transfer resolution for the year end. This allows the auditor to transfer funds from now to the end of the year.
Normally, all funds or all appropriations and accounts with a one being personnel, four with fixed assets, requires council approval. This just allows from today's date through the rest of the year to avoid you guys having to come back in because there's a lot of transfers that go on at the end of the year as everybody's using up their appropriations. Again, strictly optional if you wish to do that. Or if you can beat again, that would be fun.
I'll make the motion that we accept the transfer resolution at year end, for year end.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the resolution to transfer funds for year end. All in favor, Kathy.
Harold?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
That does not require a second reading either.
All right, the salary ordinance amendments. Jenny?
I'm not sure which one you have first, but we'll start with the Parks Department. It's a request for a job title change, removing nature interpreter and making it just event planner. The HR committee discussed it. I know there are some current, some concerns from the auditor's office about whether or not it still qualifies as salary based on the job title change and the degree change. Previously, there was a degree requirement for the background in nature interpreting and the knowledge of nature. Now it has a preferred degree for event coordination. I believe it still meets the rules of FSLA, making it salaried, but I know that the auditor's office has some concerns about that. The HR committee gave a favorable recommendation to change the job title, assuming that it still stays salary. If it is an hourly position, they do not give it a favorable recommendation due to the cost of what that will be because that position works a lot of hours for events.
I guess I would prefer some clarification before we move because if we have yes one way, no the other, how do we proceed without knowing for sure where we stand with this?
I can adjust, change that for everybody, sign it to say exactly that.
Okay.
The change would happen only if the, it still qualifies as salary, so I can change that for you guys to sign it.
Okay. What was the reason for changing the job description to just event planner?
So previously, let's go to employee, I give you a little bit of context here. So two employees ago, yes, there's always been some event coordination with the nature interpreter, but the parks add more events, those events get bigger, there's more and more. When that individual left, we hired the last employee focusing on what they knew specifically and what their degree background was on nature and what they could do from an expertise of plants and animals and whatnot. But with all due respect to the knowledge base of somebody that has that knowledge base, the event coordination, coordinating all the vendors, management of the events, that was not necessarily going well. And so when LaGrange County and that, and that employee parted ways, the conversation was, do we have the right job fit? The right job description for the right job fit for the person. And so I, my understanding is Mary and the board, Parks Board spoke, and they decided they wanted to focus on the event planning and the event coordination for the Parks Department to make sure that those go well, they're communicated well with community stakeholders. And so that's where they're leaning. There, there still is a need for nature education, but potentially the event coordinator is coordinating an expert in a topic to teach that versus trying to find somebody that can both be an expert in those topics and do all the event coordination. So trying to make it a good job fit so we're not setting anybody up for failure by hiring somebody.
So I'm the representative from the council for the Parks Board and I've attended all their meetings this year. The boards put a lot of time into this and just like Jenny said, they're looking to try to find somebody that can help bring people in. We have so many wonderful parks in this county and they just want people to come experience that. And so I think they're looking more from the event side, but they are mindful of the, the nature teaching as well. And I know it's not something they've taken lightly. They've worked on this for a long time at several meetings I've been to. So I, I think this is what they want to go with and give this a try and see if they can achieve what they want.
Okay, so we're not going to be looking six months down the road at another employee for that area specifically. It's more of bringing into the events for these naturalists.
Yes, the Park Board just decided that we need to focus more on the events. We do less and less school programs all the time and, and no, we won't be wanting another to add a naturalist to our program or to our staff anytime. Like Jenny said, we would bring in, there's plenty of people around who knows specific. I know a lot of people who are great birders who would do, come in and do a program on birds or, so our event coordinator would find these people and have them come in and do programs.
One question that came up in the meeting was, you bring in these event speakers for birds or whatever it may be, is there a fee usually that they charge to do that?
It depends on the person. I know a lot of them who would volunteer to do it, but others we may have to pay. But it wouldn't, I mean, it wouldn't, like I said, we're going to focus more on the events. I mean, we already have our Christmas light thing going on now is a two-month project and, you know, maple syrup days and are not so spooky. They're all getting big. And so we need somebody who can take over these big events and really plan them.
Did go through the tour of lights over the weekend. It was very nice.
Thank you.
All right, that was the questions I had.
Do you have a motion on them individually?
Probably since the positive recommendation came from on just the salary, we need to word it so that as long as that position works on the salary basis.
Okay, I'll make the recommendation to accept the salary ordinance for the Parks and Rec as long as the job does meet the salary guidelines by the FSLA. And I'll make that recommendation.
All right. Make that motion.
Motion, sorry. Wrong word.
Second.
Right, it's been moved and seconded to accept the amendment to the salary ordinance for the Parks Department as long as it meets the requirements for the salary position. Kathy, do you want to take the vote?
Jim?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Motion to waive second reading.
Thank you. Second. It's been moved and seconded to waive second reading. Kathy?
Mike?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Right.
One more.
Next one.
The next one is actually for the coroner's office. This came with a positive recommendation from the HR committee. Our coroner is requesting that deputy coroners who only receive pay when they are called out for the death of someone in our community, receive, essentially it would be double the call out pay. So 250 is their normal pay and additional 250 for nine specific days a year, which would be the major holidays to help get more people to want to cover on those days. And I didn't make it.
All right, are there some thoughts on this? Did the positive recommendation, I assume?
I'd make a motion to accept.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to accept the salary ordinance amendment for the coroner's deputy holiday pay.
Kathy, would you take a vote?
Jim?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Mike?
Yeah.
Brian?
Yes.
Make a motion to waive the second reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to waive second reading.
Harold?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you, Jenny. All right, next I have additional appropriations.
All right, everybody was sent the list. They're all grants. As we got grants during the year and we were spending grant money, we just need to get them cleaned up for year end.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the ordinance of additional appropriations. Kathy?
Mike?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Motion to waive second reading.
Second. Been moved and seconded to waive second reading. Kathy?
Harold?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mike, why do I keep guessing? It's what name I'm gonna call next?
Keeps it on our toes.
All right, next is transfers. Now everyone should have got the transfer list. Is there anything that you had questions on? I know last, last month, we had a question on the public defender's office. He is here today. If you have any questions on that, I know we were questioning this year, next year, budgets, all that.
And I have to put that on the current list.
Yes, and it is, it is, it is on here. So Jim is here if we have any questions for him. I sat down and spoke with him, so I'm comfortable with where it's at.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution to transfer funds. Kathy?
Harold?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Do we need to waive second reading?
Point of order, I don't, don't believe so on a transfer.
Okay, thank you, Harold. All right, next on the list is legal claims.
I'll jump in since Harold with this by, by the internet here. So I was able to sit down with and go through the legal claims. We went through each one and made sure they were in order. And so of the $28,206.33 for the October legal claim, litigation amounted to $6,038.50. So the non-litigation is $22,167.83. So I make a motion that we approve the legal claims of $28,206.33.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the legal claims. Kathy?
Mike?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
All right, we have the minutes from the October 14th meeting and the November 10th meeting.
I'd move approval as presented.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from November 10th to October 14th as presented. Kathy?
Karen?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
All right. Any other business to come before the board? I would like to have Inspiration Ministries come up, please.
Good morning, thank you. My name is Andrew Foster. I'm the president of Inspiration Ministries. And joining me this morning is my VP and board chair, Don Harvey, and a community advocate and friend, John Schmidt. I assume you guys maybe are aware that a few weeks ago, the LaGrange Commissioners, which we appreciate so much, they unanimously voted to support partnership with Inspiration Ministries to apply for an Okra Recovery Housing Program Grant with, through the Office of Community and Royal Affairs. This is their third round. Inspiration Ministries have been very fortunate to win the first two rounds that they've had this program in existence in the state. And so this morning, my, my request, it's a bit unconventional and it's also time sensitive with these grants. Whether I wish it was different or not, the, the, the grant announcements and the applications are always a very short timeframe, about eight weeks. And so in this process, once we found out the announcement, we came to LaGrange County, got approval, which we, again, appreciated so much. And the application is now due on the And the application is now due on the 21st. Fortunately, based on our experience, um, we were prepared to do that, we're working with Region 3A, the grant administrators, to put the application together. My request today is this, is that as a part of the application, there is an opportunity for the county in partnership, uh, to make a commitment of distribution of their opiate settlement funds. There is no requirement for the specific amount, and the idea of these funds being contingent is, is, uh, is very valid. But the reality is that when we put the application together, to be able to put on the application that the county is willing to, um, commit funds to the project, again, no matter what the amount, it yields us a certain number of points. And now they may kind of decide how many points that is later, but in one of these applications is very competitive, and, uh, we've always leaned towards having just the most points possible, uh, is going to be to our advantage. And so our, our request today is for the council to consider, um, a, a commitment of opiate dollars. And again, it's, it can be contingent, that's not, that's not the issue, we wouldn't hold you to it if we didn't get the grant. But I, I think if I've looked at the public records, you know, LaGrange County has about $180,000 in opiate unrestricted restricted monies, um, that I don't think we've used yet. And again, I, I don't want to be presumptuous, and I'm not asking for the moon today, it's really more of a, not to make light of it, but it's almost kind of a token commitment, uh, for us to earn points to make this grant application as competitive as possible. And so whether it was a thousand, whether it was 10,000, um, I can't really say how many more points it would get, but the commitment itself would yield us points to make us more competitive. And, and again, our hope really is that this will be the first recovery home really established in LaGrange County. And so it's a, you know, I don't want to exaggerate and say it's a once in a lifetime opportunity, that's, that might not be the case, but we've been doing this for, you know, 15 years, and we've never seen these opportunities come around until just the last five years when they launched this pilot program. So it's a unique opportunity, um, and our heart is to be as competitive as possible on behalf of LaGrange County, uh, so that we can, um, secure the grant and, and work on a, a, a plan to build, uh, LaGrange County's first recovery home. Um, and so again, you know, uh, to the time sensitive part is there's, there won't be another council meeting, uh, you know, we have a, we have another commissioners meeting next Monday where we're, um, ironing out a few more details. But the reality is, is that this is just kind of our timeframe, and so I wanted to come this morning, uh, and, and hu, and I mean it humbly request, uh, that you guys consider it. Historically, we've done, again, this is our third opportunity for the application. Our first one was in the city of Butler, uh, where we built two stick-built homes to serve 10 men in recovery. The city of Butler at that time committed $10,000 to that project. In 2023, uh, when we submitted our next, it was with the city of Kendallville, they decided to partner with us. And we're actually in the middle of that project right now, remodeling a commercial building that we own in downtown Kendallville for 13 beds to serve men in recovery. Um, and they partnered with us for $10,000 then. Um, and so that, that is our request, uh, again, that it doesn't have to be the same amount, um, but our hope is that any amount, uh, will be on the application and make that application stronger for our opportunity to get this grant from LaGrange County.
Andrew, thank you.
Yes.
Uh, I do want to say, there is a committee working on opioid funds and where they should go. So I don't want to disrespect their position, but I also see an opportunity here to help make this happen. So I guess I would suggest that maybe a $500 commitment doesn't step on any toes, hopefully gets you the points you need, and would give us an opportunity later if that committee decides that this is, we could do more funding than that. But that would get done today, what we need to do in a respectful manner. Just my thoughts.
And, and that is our hope, to, to be honest with you, it is, it's, it's a short timeframe. If we had longer to navigate some of the committee, I, I've talked with Jackie, that, that is our heart to partner with that committee and do our due diligence by all means. But just do the sensitivity of the nature and, and, you know, it's Christmas season and, and the holidays, it's, it's just been difficult to connect. Um, and so we're looking forward to that and building more relationships in LaGrange County. But with an application due in two weeks, um, we came to the council this morning, so yeah, thank you for saying that.
Kathy, are we able to do that?
You do have an appropriation in that fund for 2025, so on the date of his application, you can say that yes, you've approved that. If approved, if he gets the Okra grant, you, it would require an additional appropriation for 2026, because you do not have anything in the budget. But as of the date of the application, December 22nd, I think you said you could have that commitment in there.
So I would make a motion that we commit $500 to the Inspiration Ministries, um, pending their grant approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to commit to Inspiration Ministries $500 to go towards their assistance in the Okra grant, pending the approval of the Okra grant. Kathy, you want to take the vote?
Harold?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Andrew.
Thank you so much, guys.
Zach, did you have something?
Morning. Not on, not on the agenda, but I just want to do a quick follow-up from last month. Um, I did a short presentation on, uh, what we're looking to, like, cume drain fund. Want to know any more of your guys' questions or concerns, it's been a month, I didn't hear anything from anybody specifically, so, uh, so Drainage Board wants me to keep pursuing this, and, uh, they asked what you guys thought, I said, I haven't heard anything from them yet, so I wanted to get a chance to readdress it and, um, talk to you guys more time before I keep pushing for this, uh, because they want me to keep continuing unless it's, uh, not an option based on something that's not realistic to do, um, I guess.
I guess our biggest concern is the 1.6 to $2 million swing from what you're getting now outside of the tax levy to moving it inside of the tax levy, that takes your 800,000 you're getting now out of our budget, plus another 800 to a million out of our budget because of the...
No, so I'm only the, I don't know where that number came from, but I'm only requesting about $800,000 a year on the cume drain fund.
Right, right.
Not the extra, whatever you said, 800,000.
Well, be 1.6 million.
Yeah, that's go, that's going off, we won't be collecting that. That makes sense, I guess.
Right, because 800,000 right now, okay, we're, we're maxed out, you're getting another 800,000. So when that goes inside the levy, we lose that 800,000, it's outside, plus we've got to pay 800 from inside for this. Is, am I understanding that right, Kathy?
The, yes, currently the drainage fees that are put on the tax bills are outside of the levy, so they don't affect your budgeting of any other funds.
Right.
Now that's specifically for the raber ditch?
Correct.
Or is this for?
Yeah, it's whatever ditch serves your property, serves their property.
Right.
They get an extra bill on their tax bill.
Right.
Doesn't affect your budgeting for County General and all those other funds. Cume drain fund would be inside the levy, so any, you're only allowed, you know, the 4% average growth quotient that you can increase each year, it would take away from that. So the, no longer is the, outside the levy, these extra bills that I get, because my property's drained, or you get, it's now taken out of your total budget that you get to save this much, goes County General, Parks, all those, so it has to come from somewhere.
Correct. That's, that's the drawback of it. So the, it's, uh, they just, the Drainage Board asked me about what you guys thought about it, I said, I haven't received any questions or concerns, I was hoping to talk to them a little more, one-on-one, or address their concerns. Harold was the one that raised up a little, uh, I'm not sure exactly what he wanted, but we've been working, me and Cory, on what I think he was requesting, uh, on the drains we have in the county and what work we've accomplished so far. We have gotten the tiles completed on a percentage that's been rebuilt or replaced with brand-new tile. This isn't patches, fixes, uh, just, you know, along the way, this is actually reconstructed brand-new tile since I've been here. It's 11 and a half percent of, 100% of the drain tiles have been replaced, which I'm glad Harold requested that, because I wasn't sure if he placed, you know, 1% or 20%, but 11 and a half, which I thought's pretty good, given the time I've been here, and, uh, we worked the little COVID process, which put us on basically hold for a year and a half, and then the first year was learning how to do stuff, so we've done most of this in about five years' time, um, on a, on a condensed scale, so. But the problem is, like I addressed with you guys, is we're hitting a wall here of like, uh, oh, the, how much we can handle on, uh, the individual drain funds, like we do it now in-house, uh, we could always try to sub it out like some other contractor, other surveyors offices does do it, but, uh, that gets cumbersome, having to work within a whole other surveyor's office and trying to get more watersheds and notify people. It's just very cumbersome, but this is an option that the Drainage Code allows us to have, which other counties, I've looked into, some counties do it, um, like I said, I'm not sold completely on it, but I'm definitely more in favor than against it, and so is the Drainage Board, so I would like to address your guys' concerns and pin down exactly what those are, and so then I can try to address those and bring it back to you, addressing those concerns. So I need them either emailed, written down, text message, or have a meeting with me, I'll write them down for it, but I want to be able to address the exact concerns, so I can try to put the rest or get around how, when you, what we need to do if we want to go this route, if that makes sense. So I just want to give a quick update, um, we did work on the drains, next Cory's putting those in on, uh, all the open ditches we've maintained, uh, sections footage-wise, so I just think it'd be close to the same maybe, uh, I don't know, we'll find out here in a week or so, but if you have any questions or concerns today that you want addressed or something you want to talk to me outside the meeting about?
So you would be assessing a, a tax, property tax to the whole county? Versus the way that we do it now, so it's a specific waterway or drainage?
There's benefits, pros and cons to both, and I explained to the, Mike, were you here last month?
I wasn't.
Okay. I explained there's pros and cons of both, I don't like the whole new system, all of it, because it does, right now I collect my money, me and the Drainage Board spend it. If you guys, if, if go to the cume drain fund, you guys have that account, I have to ask for that money each year on my budget, and I have to show you what projects I'm planning on doing and spend it that way. So it's, right now you guys, I don't have a lot of control over the drain fund stuff that me and the Drainage Board do, but in this case, the cume drain fund, you guys have that money. Each year I have to ask so much for out of it, and you have to be able to show you what I'm doing, and answer to that, so it's not just...
That's the way it is now, you can't spend money out of the raber ditch fund to fix the, the John Fund or whatever.
That's a benefit, but it's also a con in the sense that, oh, I was explaining to them, if we have a small little drain patch, it's $2,000, it's a regulated drain, and I go out there and the individual says, uh, can we fix this? I look, we have no money account, here's a petition, 1,800 acres and this watershed, I need 180 acres, 80 acres to sign it, and then I have to have a whole year just to fix $2,000 pa, tile patch. So the drawback is, the, the people are wondering like, why do I have to go through this process, just use one little fix? I said, well, that's the system we work, and he says, well, there's got to be a better way. I'm like, well, I don't know if there's a better way, there's a kind of a more efficient productive way, but it does have drawbacks, this is that system. And I looked into it, I told, uh, council, when I first started, I looked into it pretty in-depth, went to all the counties, talked to everybody, I didn't feel comfortable at that time. Now we have a citizen's drainage board, I've been here, I've seen LaGrange changing, I've got a good feel, I explained to the Drainage Board, and they were hesitant, really hesitant at first, but after we went to a roundtable discussion with Elkhart County, they're like, well, this is probably what we need to start going towards in the future, in their opinion, but, uh, based on what knowledge we've gained. So they want me to keep pursuing it, so I'm going to keep pursuing it, um, I just want to make sure, if we're going to pursue it, I want to get you guys' concerns pinned down so I can address them, uh, that way, uh, if I'm going to pursue it, we have a avenue of getting it passed, if that's what we're going to do.
I think you mentioned at one point that the incorporated towns aren't included in, or carved out of, of that.
Correct. In the cume drain fund and drainage code, it limits, we can't charge incorporated, any residents or property in the incorporated limits of any town, correct. That's a drawback, one of the three big ones. But there are solutions to it, I have in place that I think would work on three options, but if that's the main concern, then I want to make sure I get that pinned down, I'll go to all the towns, if you guys are concerned about how it's going to get paid for. One, we can vacate the drains in town, two, we can get an local agreement, how we're going to cost if we have to work in town, or we can say, hey, we'll maintain the whole drain through town, but we want you to collect this amount of tax, what we're collecting from everybody else, and, and pay it to the surveyor's office to maintain that section of drain in town. Those are the three options I'd have to try to give them, you know? Because like the Bar Kyle, Topeka may say, just vacate, we'll take care of the Bar Kyle in town, and I'd be happy with that, it'd take a heck of a lot of stress off of our office having to deal with the storm drain of Topeka, the main line, but, uh, they may say, no, we want you to maintain it, but it's something we could work out, I think. And trust me, if it doesn't work, they know, and, uh, vice versa.
Thank you, Zach.
No problem, you guys, I want you guys to call or email me if you have any questions, I like to sit down and talk to you individually, a little more in detail too, so outside the meeting, thank you.
All right. Is there anything anybody else has to bring up at this time?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn? Kathy?
Mike?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone, uh, I apologize that I had to do this remotely, but I'm in Illinois and, uh, teaching a bunch of police and fire chaplains today and tomorrow, so I appreciate your understanding, uh, if I don't see you before, Merry Christmas, everyone, have a really blessed day, thank you so much.
While you're getting all those, like, signed, I will revise this.
Oh, we have more to sign.